Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brisbane City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have a special speakers forum on the Baylands, and we're very excited to have a great lineup of different experts who are going to talk about conservation planning, ecological restoration, zero net energy building, renewable energy generation, transportation planning, and site remediation. So first, I just want to start off by thanking the Brisbane community and other community members for staying with us for the long haul. We're finally there, nearing the end of the EIR review, which started last fall. And I want to thank everyone for participating, for posing really insightful questions and comments. And tonight, we'll have the workshop, as I mentioned. So just want to mention, the next steps will be that we have a meeting next Monday, June 19th, where we'll discuss the deliberations process. And I also will be hosting some informal coffees on Wednesday, June 21st at 10:00 a.m., and also Sunday, June 25th at 9:00 a.m. at Madhouse Coffee. So that'll be another opportunity for the public to come and speak more informally about their views and ideas. And so I want to thank the speakers for coming tonight. We have Andrea Traber from Integral Group, Josiah Kane, Director of Innovation from Sherwood Design Engineers, John Andry, Principal of Integral Group, Jessica Alba, Principal of Nelson Nygaard, Rick Williams, Partner with Van Meter Williams &amp; Pollack, and Sarah Seelof, Executive Director of the Centre for Creative Land Recycling. And we also are fortunate to have the representative of Assemblymember Kevin Mullen. We have Ben Cohn with us here tonight, who will start us off with a few words, and then we'll go into the workshop. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. Assemblymember Mullen had planned on attending. Unfortunately, the rescheduling happened to be on the day the budget had to be passed. So there was a lot going on in Sacramento today, and he simply couldn't get away. But he did send me to deliver a statement on his behalf, which I'm very happy to do. Again, my name's Ben Cohn. I'm one of his district representatives here in the district. Assemblymember Mullen represents AD22, which starts up here in Brisbane and goes down the bay to Redwood City, out to the coast, Pacifica, down to just shy of Half Moon Bay. So the Baylands is certainly on our radar. We've been following it very closely with bated breath. We're excited that some consequential meetings are in the very near future. I know the excitement might manifest as anxiety here, or some other emotion, but we're watching very closely and look forward to seeing what the community decides to do with this potentially monumental project. So I'll share his words with you now, if I may. "I'd like to applaud the work that's being done to redevelop the Baylands. What I've seen so far indicates a vision for a sustainable future and a constructive use of the 660 acres along the bay. The project is beautiful, and the developers have done a very nice job. The ongoing housing crisis that we confront cannot be ignored. Now more than ever, what is happening in Sacramento must also be part of the conversation." Last year, Assembly Democrats presented a plan to spend over $1 billion to assist with affordable housing development. Around the same time, the governor announced that he was not going to approve any public funding assistance for housing without a major shift in local land use decision-making processes. To date, he has not backed off of that position. Though there are still funds from last year's proposal, unless there is a bill that is more directive towards local governments, the governor is not going to sign it. It's no secret that the costs involved in building anything anywhere in the Bay Area are exorbitant. So without public or nonprofit assistance, costs prohibit the development of housing that is affordable to many, let alone most. As a former mayor of South San Francisco, I understand and strongly support the local land use decision-making process. Ultimately, I strongly believe in preserving public input and shaping communities. However, I also understand some of the governor's frustrations. According to a recent search of Craigslist, there are 10 rental properties available in Brisbane. Studios starting at $1,600 a month, one bedroom starting at $2,000, two bedrooms starting at almost $2,600. There happens to be a three-bedroom, that's just shy of $2,400, which relatively speaking is a steal. And there is a five-bedroom house available for $7,500 a month. This is simply not sustainable. Senator Weiner of San Francisco has introduced SB 35, which should create a streamlined ministerial approval process for infill developments in localities that have failed to meet their regional housing needs. In addition, it would require multifamily housing developments that satisfy specified planning standards to be subject to a streamlined approval process. What we do not know at this point is whether SB 35 would move the needle enough to get the governor to agree to additional funding for housing. Given today's constitutional deadline to pass the state budget, I can tell you there are no additional funds for housing in the 2017-2018 fiscal year budget. So unfortunately, the issue is put off for yet another year. Other housing bills that are still moving through the legislative process this year include a pair of bills that I'm authoring, AB 1157, which seeks to streamline the approval and construction of housing for school district employees, and AB 1598, which would authorize cities and counties to create affordable housing authorities to capture tax increments similar to the former redevelopment law to finance the construction of affordable housing. Assemblymember Chu of San Francisco has authored a package of housing bills, AB 72, 73, and 74, all of which I've co-authored. Respectively, the bills seek to strengthen implementation of housing elements, increase zoning for housing, and direct the Department of Housing and Community Development to establish the housing for a healthy California program to help people afford housing. While we'd like to see a silver bullet solution to the affordable housing crisis, the truth is that things move very slowly in Sacramento. Social theorists speak of the concept of punctuated equilibrium. This is the idea that the long, smooth arc of history can be and often is punctuated by dramatic shifts that can change and chart the course of the future. Brisbane finds itself with an opportunity at a moment in history that, if acted upon, could revolutionize development, land use, housing, transportation, commerce, culture, society, the environment, and the economy on the peninsula and in the Bay Area. The longer the housing shortage persists, and the longer price increases persist, the greater the pressure becomes to act at the state level. For example, last session, the legislature adopted accessory dwelling unit regulations on local jurisdictions, simplifying and all but guaranteeing accessory dwelling units approval by removing some measure of local control and discretion. Brisbane is a unique city. It has charted its own course and has been successful in preserving its charming character while also being a leader in environmentally conscientious development and ensuring that the quality of life of its citizens is upheld and enhanced. This moment in time provides the city of Brisbane with a unique opportunity to demonstrate to the region and to the state that can exercise local control to both preserve and protect its history and personality as a small and peaceful town in a big and bustling world, and also demonstrate leadership in addressing the region's housing crisis in a way that is smart, sustainable, and timely. I'm honored to serve the people of northern San Mateo County. Fortunately, we live in a culture of innovation. Creative problem-solving is our DNA, and I believe we will address these problems fairly and justly, so we can all be proud of our region, our cities, and our neighborhoods. Thank you, Assemblymember Kevin Mullen.
Great. Thank you both for welcoming our forum here tonight. Just want to say, we're very pleased to be here to talk to you about lots of great things that are happening out there in the world around sustainable development. We will...on our agenda tonight, we have about five topics we want to delve into. Before we get started, just want to remind all of us that your Sustainability Committee, the Baylands Sustainability Committee, which I have had the pleasure to work with for a few years now, spent a good amount of time really developing this framework, the Sustainable Design Framework for the Baylands. And so we're going to delve into some topics that are very related to that. And just also to help you all think about this, this is a...a lot of the topics we're talking about tonight are happening in towns everywhere, not just small towns, big towns, medium towns, not just California. These things are very...these topics are extremely timely everywhere. I was in Ohio last year, in a tiny town in Ohio, and they have the same affordable housing problem. So just to communicate that, don't feel like this is your burden only, and what we're trying to do tonight really is to help you think about how you might go about a project like this, how you can think about it, how it might be phased, what types of things you might ask to get integrated into the project, and so on. So we're going to dive into that. As we get started here, I would like to introduce the panel here. So I'm...we're going to start with Integrating Natural and Urban Systems by Josiah Kane. Josiah is the partner at Sherwood Design Engineers. Sherwood is very well-known for doing very innovative projects, integrating built environment with natural systems. He's going to tell us all about some of the great projects they're working on. I'm going to talk to you...I am not John Andry, but I am going to talk to you about net-zero energy and net-zero carbon buildings, and some of the technologies and strategies that go into that. Jessica Alba with Nelson Nygaard is going to talk to us about sustainable transportation planning. Nelson Nygaard is also very well-known for very innovative and well-connected mobility planning and transportation planning, so we hope to see some great examples there of that type of work. Rick Williams, who's also a partner with Van Meter Williams Pollack, architects and urban designers, will talk to us about housing and how housing fits into sustainable development. And then I think Sarah Seelof, who is arriving right now, is the Executive Director of Centre for Creative Land Recycling, Sea Clear. She and Marcus Niebank, a partner also with Amica Strategic Environmental Consulting, will be talking about site remediation strategies. So this will be an exciting and very interactive conversation tonight. The way we're going to do it is we're each going to talk about our subjects. We've got them kind of broken out here. We do have some times associated on the agenda. I'll manage that. But we're going to present, and then we'll have time for a discussion and so on on that topic, and then we'll move on to the next one. And Ingrid will have a microphone for people to ask questions and so on. Okay, so we're going to take a break in the middle. And I just wanted to remind you a little bit, this is the framework. I'm sure all of you have memorized it and are thoroughly inspired. The topics we're really hitting on through our presentation night are around zero carbon, mainly in the built environment, transportation, water, natural habitats and wildlife, which also relates to natural systems, and also the site considerations. You will recognize some of this out of your framework, but zero-carbon buildings, transportation, water. I will say, the framework is pretty well-thought-through, has all kinds of guidelines and strategies and indicators that can be of great use in this project. So I'm going to now turn it over to Josiah, who's going to start it off with Integrating Natural and Urban Systems.
Great. Thank you. So I guess I would just say that in our work, we pretty much focus on sort of the interaction between natural systems and urban systems, and it's been the focus of sort of my inquiry professionally for all of my career. You know, it's interesting, I guess, you know, just to reflect for a moment, I mean, I grew up in a small town in West Marin that's sort of been dealing with development pressure since I was born. It's a common issue around the perimeter, especially of San Francisco. And I guess I would just say, just reflect what you said as far as, these are all issues that we're dealing with globally. There's a lot more people, there's a lot more impact, and we're learning a lot more about how the planet works. What's really interesting for me is that a lot of the problems that we're having with ecological systems and natural processes have to do with bad engineering. And I wouldn't say intentionally bad engineering. We've just learned a lot about how cities work. And from a certain standpoint, if you take a conventional sort of middle-of-the-20th-century city, essentially what it does, just through its geometry, is it overheats and offgasses, and when you plug it in, it sucks up rivers and mountains to function. And so just as a baseline for sort of our inquiry, it really has to do with how that urban fabric can function differently. It doesn't have to do that. It can be an integrated part of ecological systems and processes that are part of our intact, sustainable, global ecology. And so that's really sort of where we come from as an engineering firm, trying to understand how urban systems and processes can be a more integrated part of that global infrastructure. I guess this kind of says it all. I won't get into the patterns of nature and some of the things that happen, other than to say that water actually has a geometry to it that slows it down. It also helps clean it, and it prevents water from speeding up and creating erosion. When we put it in pipes and linear drainage systems, we actually prevent it from self-mitigating, and it starts to cause problems. So one of those things that are highly engineered issues, and a lot of the work we do is with water. We do a lot of net-zero water planning. We also do a lot of constructed wetland water filtration systems for both stormwater and sewage reuse, and doing some of that in a few places around the bay and beyond. Something that we're working on, well, as you can see with a lot of people, the city of Oakland, NASA, Stanford, Cal, Integral Group, and a bunch of other partners, is through some research grants, to try and understand what a sort of eco-block might look like. And a lot of that is from an infrastructure standpoint. And we'll go deep into that, but a lot of it has to do with putting nature back in the city. Some interesting things happen when you take natural systems out of the city. One of them is the urban heat island, which causes an average of seven degrees of overheating nationwide, often can be 14 degrees. Few people know that that artificial overheating of cities kills more people than any other natural disaster. So more people die from engineered overheating than die from hurricanes, earthquakes, tornadoes, flooding. So that's something that we're working on mitigating, and some of that has to do with just street trees, but a lot of it has to do with stormwater management, because you get other benefits ecologically from stormwater management. And in fact, right out in front of the building, for example, using plants to filter water, but also to get that water in the ground so it can stay there. As it turns out, with global warming, when the sun shines on dry dirt, it heats up. When the sun shines on damp dirt, it doesn't actually heat up. It actually creates a cooling effect. As the moisture evaporates from the soil, that evaporated water condenses after it evaporates and creates rain. So we're actually limiting the amount of rain that we can have and overheating our cities simply by trucking all the water or directing all the water out with drainage systems rather than integrating that water into our soils and landscapes. So these are the kinds of things we can look at, really at any scale.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's...
What's going on? And then also looking at some more mechanical systems just around water efficiency with appliances not using as much. What kind of water? Do we need to use the cleanest, safest, most reliable water supply ever known to mankind for flushing toilets and watering lawns? Or can we use water that we've just taken a shower in to do that? Or possibly recycle water even at block scale to do that and save the nice, hetch-hetchy glacial melt for drinking? All of these things are possible. They can be done at nearly all scales, part of what we're looking at with the eco-block. How small of a scale can you accomplish some of these things? And you can get amazing return on investment. As it turns out, landscapes are very cheap to operate and very cheap to install relative to most of the infrastructure that we're using currently. So that's sort of the basis for it. Probably seen green streets. They do a lot of things, many of them performative in the way that I've just talked about, some of them providing shade and habitat. Another thing that's coming up that's really interesting, which is sort of where the green building movement is going, it turns out that people who live in environments, urban environments, that have ecology in them, perform better. And that can be taken a lot of different ways. In commercial environments, and a lot of work's going on down the peninsula, trying to investigate these things, because we have these sort of high-functioning Fortune 500 companies that are vying for leadership, also vying for employees from a limited resource base. And what they're finding is, if you have ecology integrated in your campus, if you have fresh air, if you have daylight that changes throughout the day rather than just artificial lighting, people have less sick days, people are more productive, people report that they're happier at work, a lot of things that mean a lot of value for someone whose livelihood depends on paying someone a salary or potentially your product being that person's time. So, you know, you can commodify it, and we have to do that, because that's what developers use as a basis for what they build. But really, what it means is happier people who are healthier, more productive, and higher-performing. And some of those things have to do with interacting with other species. If you see a bird out the window, it takes your eye away from your desk, and just for an instant, you look out the window, and it forces the muscles in your eyes to look a long distance away, just for an instant, and you look back down, and your eyes contract again. But just the act of doing that a few times a day keeps you from getting tired, keeps your eyes from going bad, keeps the muscles in your eyes stronger. A lot of these little subtleties really all tie back to what, to us, is basic infrastructure. So really trying to tie all those things together in the fabric of our environments. I don't know if I'll say more about that here. Little foreshadow for you on parking and traffic calming. I will say that making space for some of these types of urban interventions also does make the city safer. The corner of an intersection is a perfect example. If you have some vegetation on the corner, it prevents someone at a stop sign or a light from swerving around the person who's waiting to go through the intersection and taking a right turn, which is the most common pedestrian engagement with a car that we have. And so some of these things, while you're making space, you can also do it in a smart way that makes it safer for people to move around. And then really looking at scale, this was some work we're working on UC Merced, on their grading and drainage and stormwater, and also their water. And just looking at the dynamics between, as I mentioned, drinking water, wastewater, gray water, stormwater, trying to look at all of those different water supplies that are sort of moving around in a space in an integrated way and to use them smartly. This was a study where we basically told our client that, we know you don't want to do onsite wastewater reuse, but we've done some preliminary looking at it, and to go 12 and 1/2 miles with 80 feet of vertical to get from, all the way from the treatment plant back to your campus, just the cost of the pipe would be more expensive than putting a treatment plant right where you are and treating the sewage in place and reusing it there. And we happened to find a good location for that, so we're just going to leave space there in case you decide to do that later, because we think it's a better idea, right? So thinking ahead, trying to, you know, be future-ready and adaptable. And then really looking at some of the integration we do with energy firms around horizontal infrastructure and essential utility plants, and trying to understand the relationship between energy and water. So, you know, most people don't know that 25% of our total energy load is for operating water infrastructure. So what that means is, if you have a net-zero energy building, but you're getting all of your water from offsite infrastructure, you're actually a 75% reduced energy building. You're not a zero-energy building. On the flip side of that, 37% of the nation's freshwater goes to thermal power plants, coal, nuclear, gas, power plants for cooling. And there are 17 states that use more than half of their freshwater for thermal power plants. So reducing energy, managing energy and water together, makes a really big difference. Just sort of reiterating that sort of adaptability of it. So we try to sort of make an infrastructure platform, often energy and water together. You don't have to put the whole thing in. You can put a Volkswagen chassis in that a Porsche Turbo can bolt onto sometime later in the future when new infrastructure is available, new technology is available. So once again, just being smart, not necessarily thinking that you have to spend a whole bunch of money now. And that might be about all I have. Sea level rise stuff, oh yeah, there's that. We've been dealing with a lot of sea level rise, as you may guess. You may have also heard of the rebuild-by-design...wait, resilient-by-design. It was rebuilt-by-design in New Orleans when they had a hurricane, and it was rebuilt-by-design in New York when they had a hurricane. The San Francisco Bay Area is having the same competition, but before, there's a disaster. So trying to avert a disaster called resilient-by-design, just to sort of underscore the importance of it right now. We've been doing a lot of work just trying to understand how the way that we design coastal cities and coastal infrastructure can in and of themselves respond to and brace for potential future changes. And some of that can be soft, some of that can be retreat, some of that can be ecological, which tends to take the sort of peak off of it. There's a thing called the horizontal levee that's on this slide there, that really just...it turns out that if a storm surge comes in, if it encounters a lot of wetlands and disruption and roughage and inconsistent geometry, it takes the energy out, and it doesn't make it as far onto the shore. There's a lot of debate going on about, you know, we removed a lot of the wetlands, mostly through fill. Do we fill the bay more by pushing wetlands out into the bay a little bit more? Do we allow the bay to come in and create wetlands again as the bay comes in? According to San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, they're already seeing about 12 inches of sea level rise in San Francisco. And we've seen that, the ocean came up over the Embarcadero on a hot, on a warm sunny day with no wind and barely any swell this year. A bunch of our staff went down to watch it happen. They knew it was going to happen, and it did. And the stormwater management entities have abandoned a few facilities that used to hold stormwater and then dump it into the ocean, but now the ocean is higher than their stormwater facility, so it doesn't work anymore. So we're seeing these kinds of things happening, and so just understanding that and acknowledging that in the design of things. And I think that's all I have. I just thought I'd put a plug in here for a book about all this stuff, if you're interested, that we wrote in response to the recent UN Habitat III Convention in Quito. And it talks about a lot of the stuff I just talked about, and also this sort of transfer between technology and the developed and developing parts of the world. So thank you.
Great. Well, we are way ahead of schedule, so we have a lot of time for questions and discussion. So that was all extremely clear. Yes, hello. Would you like a microphone? I think Ingrid has one. Otherwise, you can just come right up. There we go.
I'm Paul Buscaglia. Paul Buscaglia, Brisbane resident. Thank you for being here. I was wondering if you've ever thought about floating structures, in particular, the San Francisco Bay. Years ago, when I was talking about floating structures at the Baylands meetings, I spoke to Will Travis, the director of the BCDC at the time, and after talking with him and explaining, trying to paint the picture of the idea, he was all for it. You know, of course, you couldn't start from the water, you'd have to start in from the water. But my thought, like for the Baylands and the rail side in particular, hundreds of millions of dollars have come into the San Francisco Bay for wetland restoration, largest project on the West Coast. And so I thought, in the name of reclaiming industrial sites, the rail yard was just like the old salt ponds were, recreating these wetlands with floating structures in amongst the wetlands. amongst the wetlands, I thought there could be funding for restoration efforts. But the thing that I thought the most about, the wetlands and the floating structures, were the fact that they could be sea-level-rise adaptable, critical infrastructure could be built for earthquake issues because anything floating wouldn't be affected by an earthquake, and hundred-year flood-type stuff. So, his comment in a nutshell was that what we don't need is more open water in the bay, we need more wetlands. And, you know, he wasn't saying that I would approve it, but I definitely would go along with what you're saying as far as these floating structures and recreating more wetlands. So, maybe that could be something that could be thought about rather than trying to, you know, we don't want to live behind levees. And so, his comment was low-lying areas should be considering this, so, thank you.
Great comment. You won't get any pushback from me on that. I've used floating wetland systems on a few occasions, never quite at the scale I've wanted to, to tell you the truth. There's some very interesting, I mean, the range would be from trying to just treat water in a small lake. One little floating wetland can treat about an acre of wetland with nothing but a little, one little solar panel and an air stone. They're pretty interesting. I also proposed 19 acres of floating wetlands along Dubai Creek one time to try and solve the water quality problems there. So, I mean, I think it's a very effective solution, especially on a hard bay edge like we have. And like you said, they can rise and fall. There's a whole lot of stuff, recycled materials, blah, blah, blah. The EPA is actually using them at multi-acre scale for habitat in multiple places. So, you know, we've even proposed them right here on the South Bay, where creeks come out into the bay. Theoretically, a storm surge, even if you had wetlands on the perimeter, a storm surge could come up the creek and create all kinds of havoc along the creek. And so, we've looked at ways that a floating wetland straight in front of the mouth could sort of provide that puzzle piece, that missing puzzle piece, to break up just the energy from an event like that. So, I mean, it's definitely interesting to me. You know, the sky's the limit with all this sort of climate change and sea level rise in urban environments like this. I mean, I think it's really sort of all hands on deck, anything we can think of.
And I don't know if some of the architects on the panel want to chime in on that, but just a thought, I mean, we have, there's a lot of floating homes around the bay, actually, in the form of
Some of them have floating wetlands.
Houseboats, yeah. And I think it is an interesting thought. I don't, you know, it's definitely a different model. Those have sprung up in kind of the Sausalitos of the world and so on, in some of the warf areas. So, I, you know, we've got examples of it. It kind of makes a lot of sense from a technical perspective, you know, if the sea is rising, can we, you know, integrate with it in that way? I would say it's a pretty new development model. I haven't seen anyone else talking about that really in a concrete way, but heck, we are California, San Francisco Bay Area. I don't know, Rick, if you had any thoughts on floating structures or?
I just say that a couple of different, a couple of cities are looking at how they're going to use her water's edge. And there are a number of places that are basically creating wharfs in place where everything's kind of floating, and they're anticipating that as the water rises, the buildings that are basically on very large giant pontoons would just float up and down. And they'd stay in place because as in some places in Portland, along some of the rivers, where the rivers rise 30 feet in the winter time, they will literally have all of those houseboat poles up 30 feet up in the air. And then you wonder why they're there, and then when the river goes up, they still lose their, the houseboats down the river occasionally. So, I think that one of the challenges to all of these issues is most of the communities are trying to maintain an extensive amount of public access to the water's edge and regain them and reclaim them. So, a lot of them are not allowing, San Francisco, for instance, doesn't allow residential really on the water's edge side. They are trying not to privatize the area. So, it would be more commercial and institutional uses along those edges more than, say, residential because the houseboats in Sausalito, where I used to live, are, have other issues about them with sanitation and maintenance and utilities and et cetera that make those relatively difficult to do it at the densities that they're doing it. It's kind of like a single-family neighborhood in a suburb where it uses more space than there are people living in that area. So, there's a challenge with that regard as well. So, you know, it might work better when the ocean liners come in and there's thousands of people that are right there versus just a couple of hundred, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrea. Josiah, thank you for the talk on water. You know, you talked about zero-water planning and water treatment facilities and the importance of integrating water and energy. So, I'd like for you to talk about the feasibility of creating a water treatment facility out in the Baylands that not only treats the water, but deals with some of the byproducts of the sewage. And then perhaps opportunities to not only treat the water in the Baylands, but some of the surrounding areas as well.
I should have done some research. Where does the water go for treatment now?
Yeah, water treatment now is San Francisco? Yeah, okay.
Okay, it's combined.
Water treatment or waste?
Wastewater.
Our wastewater goes to the San Francisco Hundred Point.
That makes sense. And water treatment is more localized?
Water treatment is done by SFPUC.
So, it's all SFPUC, that makes sense.
It's down at Crystal Springs.
Yep. So, I mean, one of the things, there's a few different angles on this, and some of it has to do with public versus private infrastructure. And some of it has to do with sea level rise. So, we're finding, one of the challenges really around the bay is that most of the treatment plants are in sea-level-rise risk areas. Water flows downhill, and at the bottom of downhill is the bay, and right upstream from the bay is the treatment plants. And so, we're looking at large costs all around the bay just to update the treatment plants and keep them from being inundated. It's happening in Palo Alto, it's happening in Sunnyvale, it's happening in San Francisco, it's happening on the East Side. We're also finding that regardless of what you do with the plant, a lot of the lift stations are out in the muck, below the ocean now, and a lot of those pipes get seepage, and you have saltwater flowing into these pump stations, which, you know, has its own issues. But the real issue is then it pumps the saltwater into the treatment plant, and then you try to recycle the water, and you've got salty water. And so, we find that the irrigation water is too salty, it can be too salty for fixtures and toilets. So, one of the solutions that sort of works across the board that we've been exploring and that can work very well, but some people are sensitive to, and I think it's worth teasing out some of the sensitivities, is the idea of having small treatment plants that are upstream, outside the risk, closer to where the demand is. And that's especially useful if you have a campus, playfields, like high-use, large office buildings that have high air conditioning loads, things like air conditioning, toilet flushing, irrigation, where you have a lot of demand, it makes sense to have good, clean water that you can produce locally, then you don't have to deal with trying to figure out how to route the pipes everywhere, which is one of the big costs with purple pipe. What you run into is there's not a lot of public money to do these kind of smaller-scale upstream projects. And there's also, at least at first, it's difficult to get the benefit beyond sort of that big user you can find, which all sort of points toward private investment. What we found is that for very large projects, private investment works. The economics for, you know, a nine-to-10-to-15-year payback on a localized wastewater treatment reuse facility actually looks better than a 30-year bond these days, just financially. That doesn't mean that it's not benefiting everyone. So, I think the way to look at it is if you look at these sort of smaller localized treatment plants as side streams, that are really an addition to the primary treatment plant, and could even potentially be operated under the same permit as the primary treatment plant and by the same staff as the primary treatment plant. And what we find is, you know, SFPUC, who runs the San Francisco plants, is very open to this conversation and has been talking to many users in San Francisco. As we all know, there's several multibillion-dollar projects unfolding in San Francisco. They also have these new water ordinance that says if you're over 40,000 or 250,000 feet, depending on your designation, you have to exhaust non-potable water resources before you start using our precious, clean water for things like flushing toilets. And so, all of that points to, you know, these very large projects needing to generate large amounts of recycled water so they're not using drinking water for these other purposes. So, without going any deeper into it, you know, what we're finding is that it makes a lot of sense to start thinking about non-potable water treatment and reuse as more of a network and node-type system, and less of a, we have to invest billions of dollars that we don't have in the same system we have now, but we have to make it bigger. The other big advantage is, especially for small towns like this that might be growing, you don't have to go replace all your waste treatment pipes if you don't put all the new wastewater in them. So, rather than tearing up all the streets and upsizing all your pipes, you can capture the water upstream, and you can even take water that's not generated by the project. So, mining wastewater out of an existing pipe to generate non-potable water where you need it. So, we're very much in favor of that approach. We do a lot of sort of onsite water reuse in that way. And I think that there's a way for that to be, you know, what we call regenerative infrastructure. So, you know, our grandparents invested trillions of dollars in infrastructure rather than saying, you know, that was great, I think we're going to tear it all out and double down and make it twice as big, but do the same thing again. I think we can say, thanks Grandma, Grandpa for the awesome investment. We're going to bolt some things onto it that allow it to continue to be useful for decades into the future without having to go and replace it all. And I think that's really the key benefit. All right. Thank you.
Were questions? We have plenty of time for questions. Hi. Questions are always the fun part.
Sorry, I was a little late because what you're sounding sounds, saying, it sounds absolutely brilliant to me. I have sort of, as a citizen, tried to push the city to be open to the idea of a localized wastewater treatment plant. I actually heard that statistic about the He Island effect and how many people it endangers when I watched the years of living dangerously. And my question to you, and I really appreciate, you know, having some of the natural environment integrated into our urban environment. I don't think that you should have to drive three hours to experience nature. I think that's counterproductive to our transportation reduction goals. So, that leads me to my question, and that is, what do you say to the YIMBs who want to basically pave over and turn everything into a high-rise? Because I feel like as a society, we're getting pulled into two different directions. You know, we're supposed to meet the demands of an ever-growing population, but we're still trying to maintain open space, wetlands, you know, decompression space. When you live in such a dense urban environment, people need to, like, get away from the millions. And sometimes I feel like all these mass shootings we're having are just a result of density. That's the personal feeling, not a fact. And so, I just feel very caught between these two things, and I'm wondering, I'm wondering how you would respond to that.
That could be a response from anyone on the panel, I'd say. I think there are multifaceted aspects of that question, so. Anyone want to take a stab? Rick looks ready to talk.
Okay. I think one of the things that's really been the most interesting thing.
Mick, your mic.
One of the most interesting things you've seen happen in the development in urban places in recent years, if you take a trip up to Portland and see the Pearl District, which has incredible urban environment, and it also has an incredible natural environment places right within it as well, is that what we've seen most recently is a lot greater success in being able to have an interface between the urban and natural environments much more successfully than when you try to do things at a lower density, and then you end up eliminating all of the natural environment, and you end up with a, an area that is less satisfying than the goal. The idealism of the small rural town is really wonderful. The small rural town that grows becomes much more of a suburban environment that doesn't meet the aspirations of the small town, and it also doesn't meet the aspirations of the city either. So, I think that one of the challenges is to have a clear understanding of where you want to be, where you want to go, and do either of those destinations very, very well. And it takes into account water and infrastructure, it takes into account transportation, it takes into account business development and employment, it takes into account housing, it takes into account all the other aspects of the sustainable environment. And you can see the rewards reaped in those cities and communities and towns and villages that really understand to define themselves, figure out what they want to be, and then consistently move in that direction. And that's the challenge that my hometown up in Nevada did not accomplish well at all. It went from being a small town to being a suburban, whatever you thought it might be. And it didn't, everybody's always grappling with the disappointments of the past, thinking that it was always better in the past, and it's not as good now. And what it's having the hardest time doing is moving towards what the future is going to be, and how are they going to have those aspirations of being a town that's grown into a bigger city, that now accepts rail transit, and that people are going to still be commuting, and they have to provide additional housing because their kids can't afford to live in the community that they grew up in, and if they want to return home, they're having to move to a different community to solve those issues. So, I think that defining what you want to be and doing it really well and taking all of these different issues that we'll be talking about today is really an important aspect of it.
I'll go ahead and jump in. I think, am I on?
Is it green? Do you have a green light?
I'm only getting red.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you. So, good evening, I'm Sarah Seeloff. I apologize for coming late. Some of you may have heard, there's this basketball team called the Warriors. They had a giant parade right outside of our office in downtown Oakland, and so, it's a real pleasure, having fought my way through traffic and the parade route, to be here. I'll go ahead and follow up on that comment. We work with many communities across the country who are redeveloping sites like the Baylands, and we have found that for many of those communities, the redevelopment of a site is a chance to start over, it's a chance to be very thoughtful, it's a chance to engage in a really deep dialogue about what the collective vision is and how that vision engages green elements, blue elements, and also human elements, and what that balance looks like. So, I really appreciated the point about knowing where you're going and moving deliberately in that direction, because often we have seen that the redevelopment of Because often, we have seen that the redevelopment of a previously vacant or underutilized site can really be a catalyst for that kind of movement, that it actually is the force that brings people together, generates the vision. And of course, the vision will change and it'll get added to, right? Kind of like this idea of bolt-on technologies, I kind of like that. There are things that get bolted onto the vision as you go, but at root is this chance to be very thoughtful about what you want in your future and recognizing that, you know, we think differently now about the spaces we inhabit, we have different expectations than perhaps our parents did or people who were making planning decisions several decades ago. To give you a couple of examples, I'm thinking of Louisville, Kentucky, for instance, had a landfill right along the Ohio River, and they got to thinking, you know, we really don't have a riverside park. And so they very deliberately have been moving in a direction of becoming a waterfront park city. And so they have redeveloped many former industrial sites, including this landfill, which is breaking, I think remediation is beginning this October. And we had all better watch out here because according to the plans, it looks like something to rival Golden Gate Park. I mean, I think the model is based on that somewhat, an herb garden and a scent garden, and you get the idea. But it's going to be a wonderful asset. And it began because they had this vision, they said, we need more green, where can we find it? Let's go for it. We've also seen in San Jose, some of you may be familiar with the Japantown redevelopment that is happening there. There, it's a long story that goes back over 100 years. There's a wonderful documentary about it, I wish I could remember the name, but I'm sure Google can help us out with that. But long story short, what used to be Japantown in the center of San Jose then became the corporate yard. And it was paved over, I mean, just literally paved over two, I believe it's about two acres. It's a large parcel. And so now, there's a plan to redevelop that site into housing. But the point is that that housing will include a memory walk and a garden that includes Chinese and Japanese cultural elements, which were really important to people who had previously lived around the site. And that was part of the vision there as well, was to bring green back into the middle of San Jose, back to this piece of land that had previously just been an empty square of pavement once the city vacated it.
Yeah, I would just maybe briefly add, San Francisco Bay is not the only place that's turned its back on its waterfront. And we're learning across the board that cities work better with diversity and with ecological assets. And it doesn't matter if you go to the High Line in New York City and see how that's actually revitalized the entire West Side. And real estate has shot up everywhere you embrace natural systems, real estate goes through the roof. I think that's a reflection of people wanting to be there. So I don't think, I would be surprised if there are people who think it's a bad idea to integrate natural systems into a place like this. You know, I started my career much more on the activist side of the sort of nature and ecology conversation. And at a certain point, it occurred to me that development kind of has to be the economic engine that drives opportunity to do things like reclaim a waterfront. The money just needs to come from somewhere. And doing it right can be a positive thing. I don't know enough, to be quite honest, about the few decades of development politics that have unfolded here to have an opinion about it. But I think at scale, this whole idea of using development to change a place for the better, I think we know enough at this point that it should be possible to educate people. Even, we're even learning that air in buildings, if you have heap of filters, is not healthy for people because human pathogenic microbes travel on tiny little dust particles, and you need larger dust particles that come from healthy plants and soils, which harbor friendly beneficial microbes for human beings, also in the air because they battle pathogenic microbes. So this old way of sort of commanding and controlling our environment mechanically is falling down everywhere, from air quality to urban design. And across the board, what you see are people thriving in environments that are inclusive and that try to rebuild their relationship to their environments. And I think there's a tremendous opportunity for that here, right on the Bay Coast and with San Bruno Mountain right there. One of my favorite stories, I used to work for a company that did the green roof on the Gap building. And all of the seeds for that roof was collected on San Bruno Mountain to get habitat right so there'd be native grasses that the butterflies and different animals could use. As many of you probably know, over the time after that building was built, some of the grasslands on San Bruno Mountain started to decline, French broom and some other things. And so when they got the money to do a big restoration project, they had a hard time finding seed, and they actually went back to the rooftop at the Gap building to find genetically accurate seed to restore the mountain. So, you know, just as a metaphor for how it's actually possible to bring, you know, not only the human experience, but actually the habitat and the real ecology into even pretty mechanized urban environments on rooftops, which has been a personal sort of interest of mine for a long time, I've worked on a lot of green roofs. But I think the idea that human habitat and cities and urban fabric is somehow not part of the global ecosystem is just not true. Whether or not people think it is or isn't, isn't really material to me. You run into native plants in the most unlikely places, in the most urban of places. It turns out because cats kill 10,000 times more birds than windmills do. In cities, rooftops are cat-free migratory songbird habitat. So, I mean, I think just having a different lens and a different approach to how a town like this might go about it would be the first step, and trying to create some sort of a culture around that so that anyone who did want to come here understood the context of the community would be a good way to go about it.
Cool, good. Cliff, any other?
Yeah, just one last thing. You know, I'm really glad that you brought up the concept of integrating the natural world with the urban world, the built world. When you look at our town, I mean, we're all about that. You know, here's San Bruno Mountain, and we have built into the mountain, not in a way that is carving out large swaths of the mountain, but actually integrating into the mountain. You know, in our general plan, we call out a significant amount of open space, public space. And in past planning, we had used open space more as a barrier to keep the built-out area of the Baylands separate from central Brisbane and the ridge. And in our framework, we started to address, maybe that isn't the best thing to do, maybe it's better to integrate the open space so that you have a five-minute walk to a trailhead from any building. So I'm glad that you're highlighting the importance of that, and, you know, that's going to be helpful for the council as we start to get into the deliberation process for planning for the site. So thank you.
Good. Yes, question.
Hi, thank you for the interesting presentation. And also, I agree with the comments about the built infrastructure and symbiotic relationship with nature. So I think that was really good. I wanted to have a quick question and maybe some clarification on the economics. I think you mentioned that the economics are very favorable, and I would like to understand how that, is that favorable? So, also Brisbane resident.
Well, it gets fairly specific. So it depends on what system you're talking about. For example, recycled water economics have to do largely with the sort of different funding mechanisms between being able to pay for something with private equity and then have a return on investment by selling it. It's also important to look at what the projections are. We're seeing water rates going up anywhere from, well, anywhere from 8% year-over-year to 150% year-over-year, depending on where you are, around the state and around the country. And so often, if we run some sort of pro forma on sort of CapEx, OpEx for water, private small-scale water treatment facilities, it's pretty common to hear people say, water's so cheap, it doesn't pencil out. But as soon as you start looking at projections that you can take from published documents from public agencies, so not making things up, but just using existing data, as soon as you project them out a decade, all the numbers start turning right side up. So there is some of that, right? I mean, with numbers, it can be tricky. I mean, if you're not looking at projections for water rates and you use last year's water rates, the numbers don't look that good. But now that we've been doing this for, you know, five to 10 years, we make those projections, and now we have a little bit of rearview mirror, and often the projections are outpacing, the projections are being outpaced by what's actually happening, which is that water rates are going up very quickly. And if you talk to water managers, I mean, I guess without incriminating anybody, I was a keynote for an interesting, very small conference of water providers, which is, there's only about, I believe it's 14 agencies that provide all of the water to everyone west of the Rockies. And then all of the people we're familiar with, the smaller water providers are basically brokers. And so because I spoke at the middle of the day on their lunch break, I got to go all day and listen to them all talk, which was very enlightening because they're basically standing around going, they won't let us charge anymore for the water, we can't build any more water infrastructure because we've already captured all the water and it's all entitled, and we can't play with the rates at all. So basically, we're just going to drive the train until it goes off the cliff and they can tell us what to do. I mean, that was basically the attitude of like the people who are procuring our water supply. And what that means is, this is not going to continue. Cheap water is not going to continue. I generally promote that the first tier that we use to survive should be free, and the amount that you need that's way up at the top tier should be more expensive than building your own infrastructure. And I think that would solve the problem. Everybody either gets stuck in the equity place or in the commodity place, and we're just frozen, we don't know what to do. To get away from just water, and if there's something more specific, I'd be happy to address that, but stormwater, we find that...
Energy.
Energy, I mean, energy is a whole different, a whole different ball of wax, for sure. But I mean...
I'll talk about that some.
Yeah, you should actually talk about that, and we'll go get into that later, right?
Yeah, coming right up. Well, one thing I was going to mention too about some of the water systems, like wastewater treatment and so on, sometimes, you can absolutely validate this, you know, with projects of scale where you're actually would be, you know, adding quite a lot to the wastewater treatment plant, those fees, just for hookup and then for processing, can be extremely high, and those are also going up. So you compare that to a more local system, and when you've got a project of scale, actually, sometimes it's less expensive to actually do the local systems project-based. So that is definitely happening more and more. We're working on a number of projects where that is absolutely true, where the wastewater treatment itself is fairly expensive to, for the hookup fees to the sanitation plant. Sometimes they have to expand their own capacity and want to pass those costs on to the project developer and so on. So that is a changing dynamic and actually favorable for these types of systems generally. So, anything more on that?
Yeah, I mean, what becomes more and more clear is that the infrastructure that we're used to seeing is very siloed. So even today, if you want to build any kind of infrastructure improvement, it's a public bond process, you have to go with the lowest bid generally, and you're not allowed to do anything that isn't required. So if I came and I said, you know, for 10% more, I can give you a system that'll recycle sewage solids and turn them into bioplastics, which is possible, and over a 10-year period, I'm going to quadruple your return on investment, the city would have to say, nah, it's actually not our mandate to make bioplastics. It's our mandate to solve this problem right here as cheaply as possible, and our capital is limited, right? If you go to a private developer and you say, we're actually going to make you deal, like San Francisco is, with your non-potable water demands by code, and then they take a few estimates, and they get one super-cheap guy who's like, yeah, you know, I can barely not break the law by keeping the water quality as high as it needs to be, and give it to you really cheap with 20th century technology, and the next guy comes along and says, I can make bioplastics for you and you're going to triple your investment in 10 years, what do you think that guy's going to do, right? And that's literally what we're looking at with infrastructure right now. And that's why you see these small, private infrastructure systems coming to the top. The other thing is the synergies between, you know, because of those silos, it's very difficult for a municipality to say, put a central plant next to a sewage treatment plant and dump heat into the sewage, the stored recycled water. That's too many agencies, too much politics, just way too difficult to do. But if you build a central plant on the private side, like Stanford has done, and you dump your heat from your buildings into your water storage, turns out they're saving money every month at Stanford by doing that, and they'll pay off that very expansive state-of-the-art central utility plant very quickly, just because the actual economic levers that make that possible are so different from public infrastructure. And I think that's where a lot of it lies. There's a bunch of other things that are like green roofs and green streets and urban design and public realm that also pencil out, not as dramatically as infrastructure does. But I think there's enough of a case to essentially mandate, it's not more expensive, I can put it that way, which means it's not a hardship for a community to mandate that development happen in that way.
Great. I'm going to keep us moving. Now we're behind, but anyway, I'm just moving. But that was an awesome discussion. Thanks, guys. I am going to move us into the discussion about zero net energy, zero net carbon, building scale type things that are happening in the world. So our firm has been working for many years now, actually, it really kind of creating this paradigm, along with many others in the profession, but really, the whole way that we think about buildings is to see, to look at what the energy budget is. So how can we really drive down energy use in the building? How can we generate our own energy? How can we try and at least balance that or do better? So we've actually got a lot of examples. All of these are built, and we've got many more in the pipeline. We have about 50 projects over the years that we've taken this approach with, and it's not just net-zero energy, but really looking at the carbon footprint also of these buildings. So right here, we've got some office buildings, we have the Packard Foundation I'm going to talk a bit about, but the Exploratorium is actually a net-zero energy building, and it also uses 65% less water than a comparable building. The Ventor Institute down in San Diego is a lab building, that's also a net-zero energy building. And then a number of sort of midsize, 40,000-ish square foot buildings, office buildings, the DPR Construction Office, the India Way, Matilda Avenue, these are, all of these were existing buildings that we actually transformed to be net-zero energy. All of these are done on a fairly standard construction budget. I'm going to talk a little bit also about some of those economics as we get into this. Exactly, economics. We've been working with one developer down in the South Bay, actually, who is basically, he couldn't lease up his single or double-story concrete tilt-up buildings. They were just not very interesting in the market in the South Bay at all. Imagine a 40,000-square-foot concrete building that has not... South Bay at all. Imagine a 40,000 square foot concrete building that has not, not really great windows, it's, you know, it's kind of, it's definitely out of date architecturally, et cetera. But he saw a real opportunity here, and he, so he's taken these buildings, and we've worked with him now on five projects where basically, for a very similar construction budget, he's transformed them into a net zero building. So we have done a whole envelope upgrade, meaning adding insulation, adding windows, using high-performance windows, adding skylights, ceiling fans, basically really designing the project to use the available resources, solar resources, daylight, natural ventilation, things like this. And all of these projects, he has, he leases them up before they're finished. And they're in, he's in high demand. Like I say, he's on his fifth project in the last, less than four years. And really, feeling like, you know, he gets a lot of notoriety around this, too. He talks about his projects all the time, and really kind of, I mean, what do we do in the South Bay where there are these buildings that are fairly unexciting? We'll be honest. So this is an interesting, I point to this a bit because it's an interesting business model, actually. He, so he spends a little more on the construction cost. He spent actually $50 a square foot more. This is one of the pro formas. But he gets to charge a higher rent rate because their energy bills are lower. So he makes his money back within the pro forma. So it's another example of a transitioning economic model, too. And I just present this because when we talk about things like net zero energy and renewables and things like that, they're, believe it or not, it's still a paradigm that all this is way more expensive, and that the fact is, it's actually not, and it's actually better for the tenant. And just to talk about a little bit, some of the health things that Josiah was pointing at also is, these are much healthier environments. They are, you know, it's also very green and non-toxin materials, there's natural ventilation, great daylight, et cetera, et cetera. So there's additional benefits to the tenants and all. Wanted to talk a little bit about the Packard Foundation, which is basically an office building down in Los Altos Hills. And this building, after its first year's operation, was actually producing 20% more energy than it was using. And so that was an interesting question, what do they do with that energy? And it, basically, they're now, they have enough electric vehicles that are charging there, they're supplying renewable energy to the electric vehicles, the people that, some of the people that work in the building, et cetera. So this is an interesting paradigm shift also. Can the building not only supply its own energy, but supply, you know, part of their transportation, and thereby reduce even greater footprint? Again, very comfortable, very healthy building. It's certified by all the ways it can be certified. I wanted to point out, too, this is an interesting new project we're working on in San Francisco. It's about an eight-story multifamily housing project. It's, it's actually going to be affordable, and it's got about 156 units, so apartment, essentially. You see the nice urban landscape integrated there also. So taking a similar approach where we try to really drive down the energy budget, the energy use budget, but also look at the ability to produce our own. So this will have solar panels and be very energy efficient. Projects like this of scale, think about the, the volume of this, of eight stories, and kind of a small roof in comparison to the volume of the building. That's one thing we look at and see how we can really optimize that. But projects of this density sometimes can't hit a net zero goal on their own, but they're also, so they're still hooked up to the grid, and they'll be using very, a clean energy source from Clean Power San Francisco. So that equation, you can't always hit your own onsite generation equation, but since San Francisco is supplying renewable power to this building, you can actually think about it, it's still as a net zero energy building, too. So. And then, just to talk a little bit about some of the thoughts around the eco block that Josiah mentioned, too, we referenced it from the water side. We're, we're working with same team and looking at how we take 28 existing homes, including a couple multifamily buildings here, and also make this net zero energy and net zero carbon. So we're gonna be putting solar on many of the roofs, we're gonna be managing the energy use and generation onsite with a microgrid. There will be energy storage here. It's still gonna be attached to PG&E's grid, but the idea is that this block produces and uses enough on an annual and many times a daily basis to be somewhat energy independent. So again, going from, you know, a single building to kind of a community scale, this is very much the way projects are starting to be thought about. The most interesting thing about this project is that it's existing homes. So to be able to do this is, the big challenge is, there's regulatory challenge that we're gonna, we're also figuring out. But also, how do you do retrofits that, you know, doesn't make it unlivable for a year? So it's a really interesting project, actually, in that, in that way. So I very much, this is a research project. This is very innovative from many, many directions. We also looked at a campus scale project out in UC Berkeley's Richmond Bay campus, and it was five and a half million square feet of lab and research and academics, and hopefully some housing, and figured out how it could be carbon neutral and net zero also by generating its own power, but again, you know, also hooked to the grid. We're gonna be very dependent on some, a green grid and some, some offsets in this case. But again, just to show at scale, we're starting to think about this at even very large scale. And to bump up one more layer, there are many cities, actually, are starting to think about how they're gonna be carbon neutral in their own, you know, not just at the, with the city buildings, but how as a city can you be carbon neutral? So this means not just addressing buildings, but also your transportation planning. And, and to be obvious, I guess, this doesn't happen overnight. So these are, these are planning horizons of 25 and 30 years, you know, going to 2035, 2040, 2050. Many of the cities in California now that we have new emission, new emissions reduction targets to 2050, 80%, below 1990 by 2050. Many cities are starting to relook at their climate action plans to see how they can meet those targets. So all these, in my view, all these very aggressive targets really are, are driving this whole conversation. So this is, Cambridge, Massachusetts, has a carbon neutrality plan to get them to carbon neutral by 2035. We helped them with that. And so to back out a little bit, just to give a little perspective, you know, net zero energy in the old days of 2008-ish, we really focused on the building, the building energy use. And remember those CF, compact fluorescent lights? That was the most amazing technology in about 2008, right? Well, LEDs now are even far, far better performers in that way. So we don't, we didn't even talk about CFDs anymore. So, CFLs, excuse me. So it was back, back in the early days, it was really about the building level technology and so on and so forth. And then you would then try to put solar panels on, and they were a lot more expensive than in 2008. Fast forward to maybe 2016, 2015, and solar panels are seriously cheap. We still force down the energy use, but we've got all these new technologies such as LED lighting and plug load management and things like this that make that equation even tighter. And then what started happening in this similar timeframe is that, yes, renewables onsite are very, a lot better economically. We also have energy storage capabilities. We are starting to think about district energy and microgrids, but then also, the grid's getting a lot greener, actually. California's grid right now, in terms of emission factors, electricity is actually greener now than the natural gas on the grid. So we're starting to see a whole fuel switch or in that direction, towards electricity, which is good for all of us. The emissions from natural gas or greenhouse gases. And the other thing we're seeing, so, so we're seeing a green grid at the utility scale, but also the community solar and community choice aggregation. I know Chris Vane is part of, I think it's Peninsula Clean Energy, right? Yeah, so there are 13 counties in California that have adopted that. That's, that's, most of the population in California is going this direction. These are opt-out programs, so anyone hooking up to the grid is gonna be automatically in a CCA, which means that they're actually sourcing or offsetting 100% of their demand with renewables. So that has completely changed the way we think about buildings, too. So we have access to a green grid, makes it interesting. Just to talk a little bit about some of the technologies we're thinking about. I mentioned microgrids, but basically thinking about how you manage more than one building with renewables, how you kind of manage that whole load, and what storage do you need. The other benefit about things like microgrids is that they're very resilient. So you can, say you have a power outage, and as we all know, the grid isn't perfect. It does a great job most of the time, but say you've got a power outage, and how do you manage that, and can you still use your buildings and be, you know, safe and secure and so on? So that is another aspect of microgrids that we're thinking about a lot. Everyone knows, we're seeing lots of electric vehicles on the cars these days. The uptake, especially in the Bay Area, anywhere near Silicon Valley and the Bay Area, it's very high. This is now, you might have heard about this, but when everyone goes home and plugs in their electric vehicle and is trying to draw on that grid, it's a new peak load. So a lot of investigation into how to manage that load. So to be able to manage it at a site scale, so you can charge with a renewable, so you have PV panels and you can charge your car with renewables, that's taken, you know, gasoline out of, and emissions out of the transportation sector. It's reduced your demand on the, on the grid, et cetera. So this is a really interesting conversation we're having now, too. And then, quite literally, buildings are definitely getting a lot smarter. I will say, quite honestly, it's still a kit of parts. There are so many systems in buildings that very much relate to each other, but are almost standalone systems. So we're still grappling with how we integrate all of the energy management, the water, even management, fire and life safety. But there are some great examples of very smart buildings, and the whole point of this is to, that, to be able to kind of manage all this almost automatically, and then be able to, if you know how your building's performing, and you can troubleshoot things that are out of whack, and then get it to be back into high performance, that's the, really the whole goal here, is really how do you operationalize all of these great things that are built into the project. So these are, I'm sharing a lot of things that are kind of on the cutting edge, but very much in the, on the horizon, and people are actually doing them. Just to remind ourselves, too, that California's building code, in the next cycle, the 2019 cycle, residential buildings will be required to be net zero ready at the very minimum. Some of the single family are gonna be required to be net zero energy homes. So what we're talking about here is not far off in the future. I also mentioned, you know, a number of buildings that are already commercial. I have to say, the commercial market is very serious about this. There are projects up in, Department of General Services, State of California, is putting out, it's got two bids right out, right now, out for very large projects that they expect to be net zero energy. These are, one is a 500,000 square foot project, et cetera. So this is, this is real. So, not future pipe dream, anyway. So, let's open it up for questions on some of these topics. I think we'll then talk about transportation, too. Next.
You know, I do have one question, Andrea.
Yeah.
So, one of the, I don't know, I guess, you know, trying to grapple with zero net emission buildings, and so you talked about that one project on Folsom Street, might not be able to be self-sufficient, but tapping into the, the alternative energy system from, from, through PG&E. So, but you've also shown how the technology just keeps improving at a very rapid rate. So, you know, here we are with this Baylands project. I mean, we're still trying to work through, you know, the planning process, but when we get to, you know, probably some point in time where things are gonna start to be built, you know, there could be a whole new generation of, of techniques that make the buildings even more efficient. So, you know, how do you, how do you plan in, you know, those types of upgrades in technology?
Yeah, sure. That is a really good, great question, actually. You know, I think, and just to step back a little bit, actually, the great benefit we have here in the Bay Area is that we have an awesome climate to deal with, quite honestly. And so the first place we always start with our design teams and so on, is to really think about that building envelope, the building design, really optimize the ability to insulate properly and provide, you know, fresh air, natural ventilation, really optimize the natural resources. And we're very, I mean, this is a great, great place in the world to be able to do that. So a lot of the projects we showed, or I showed you, start with exactly that. So in a way, you've mitigated quite a lot of your issues if you can really do that. And you can really do that with, even with commercial buildings at scale, too. So, and that, that will kind of never change. I mean, I feel like windows and glazing have gotten, they're very high-performing products now. I don't think the improvement in window technology is gonna make a big bang kind of difference. There are things like dynamic glazing that are in the market, and, and what you can do there, and actually, the Empire State Building did this. They retrofitted their entire building with new glazing. So glazing retrofits can actually happen with old buildings. Again, sometimes incremental value of that glazing retrofit is not necessarily that valuable. So things like solar panels, now Tesla has solar, a solar roof. It's actually the roof sandwich with solar on it. That means, I mean, basically, you can take your roof off and install that roof. I mean, it's, again, leading edge in the market, and we have to see how it proves out, but the combination of, say, a solar roof and storage at your home, energy storage, that is a package. These are, it's like a bolt-on technology, actually, really, in my view, in a lot of these ways. If you really, you know, design from the get-go to be very high-performing, and then the bolt-on technologies that continue to evolve can be adapted over time. I mentioned the smart building technology. Honestly, again, we're nascent in this, actually. There, right now, there are probably 50 different products on the market that are telling us they're all doing the best thing that ever happened to building technology, and quite honestly, sorta, maybe, some of them, but they actually don't talk to each other, they don't play well together, they don't, you know, it's not a package. You still have to figure out how it all goes together. So, I mean, I think a lot of those things will continue to evolve, I hope. But, you know, we're in a pretty good place here with a lot of the technologies. I, interesting, the comparison of energy and water, you know, we've, especially in California, we've been working on this since the 70s. You might remember that first energy crisis, when, and that's when the energy code went into play. And it's actually had its great effect. You look at the market transformation since then, it is because of code and policy. So.
Would you agree, would you agree, just this slide is interesting to me because I kind of, it seems like we're suffering a little bit from an era we just went through, which was giant technology aggregators trying to provide one-stop solution platforms. And they've all sort of fallen on their faces, and I think they're starting to admit that. And what we're starting to see, that they didn't work, has really actually held back this idea of smart cities and smart buildings. And what we're seeing now, right, is sort of the Internet of Things, the IoT.
And what we're seeing now, right, is sort of the Internet of Things, the IoT, which is like the Internet would allow all of these things you're seeing to talk to an Internet of Things, rather than there needing to be some big mainframe.
Yeah, exactly. I don't see this hardware.
And I think as these mainframes realize that they're not going to be able to capture and dominate the market, that it's going to be all of these rapidly evolving, very diverse technologies, that start to have these, you know, I guess we're in Silicon Valley, these open APIs and things, so that your water appliances can talk to your TV, can talk to your battery system, can talk to your solar panels, and it doesn't really matter, because they don't have to be on the same platform, because we're rapidly moving into an era where the physical world can connect to sort of an Internet-type control system. And so, I think, I think that that's going to take on, like, solar panel-like velocity for innovation, just with everything becoming that much more efficient. It's like you're talking about with cars. You know, right now, they're all bogging down the time of use, but as soon as the car starts to be able to talk to the grid, and the car can tell the grid, I don't have to go anywhere until 7:00 AM, and then the grid can say, well, great, I'm going to put you at 2:00 AM instead of charging you right now. And suddenly, it's all sort of communicating. And I think just the efficiencies that come along with what's inevitably starting to happen are going to be almost like what we've seen with solar panels and energy dropping, right?
Yeah, and I think that's a good way to think about it, is that, you know, heretofore it's been, you know, a building, you know, energy, kind of one way, right? What's really happening is that it's becoming much more dynamic. There's, you know, flows back and forth. So is that, is that, electric vehicle also, it's a storage device, it's part of a, kind of an ecosystem of energy flows, and so on and so forth. And that's really kind of what we're seeing happening. So I agree with Jelena that it's like, it's more of a software problem than a hardware problem, because we've got the technologies kind of in place, and the network, being the grid, is really kind of adapting. It's really, it's a pretty interesting model. I think that's the big transition I'm seeing generally, is more of a dynamic network than a single point.
If I could take it in a slightly different direction, you were also talking about, well, we've got this, all these sustainability goals for our community, and we're thinking about how we're going to regulate this new development, if it occurs. And you're saying, well, gee, all the technologies are changing constantly. How, how do we regulate anything? And I think one of the things that you can, you can rely on at some extent, is that the goals at the state level for energy efficiency, green buildings, green point-rated systems, LEED systems, net zero, which will, everybody is really working hard to grapple with, because we see it coming down. It's, some of us look at it as a train that we're all jumping on, others look at it as the light at the end of the tunnel that's coming at them, and they're not sure if they're going to be run over or not. But what I think the community should think about is what you're trying to accomplish by having this sustainability framework. What is it doing for, are you, is this your regional statement? Is it your community statement of who you as a community are? What are you trying to get out of it? And how do you, you aren't going to be able to guess what all the technologies are, or what the measuring stick is going to be explicitly, because if you think net zero is a wonderful thing, once they hit net zero, it'll be something else. And so I think you should be thinking about it as a community, is how do you set up a series of goals of what you want, and how do you incentivize it so that the development that does occur, whatever it is, has an incentive to obtaining your goals and can be measured? And so, this is the trickiest part about, kind of, every city has a sustainability regulation or a sustainability ordinance, and they always are falling back on green point-rated LEED, net zero, blah, 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 blah. And that really shouldn't be the point, because we don't even know if LEED will be around in 10 years. Don't tell LEED I said that. But is it really, you know, you, as a community, have to decide, is it, is it, you want to be very sustainable as a community? Do you want to have a, some sort of a measuring stick that gives you a type of open space? Do you want all, do you want your community to be off the grid? Do you want it to be creating enough energy for your existing community to be off the And then you have to take that development proposal, whatever it is, and you have to set up a series of incentives so that you gain that benefit within the development process. Because you don't want it to rely on a measuring stick today that you aren't going to know is going to be around tomorrow. In, I'll just use Mountain View for an example, they have, we just finished rezoning the whole four miles of the El Camino Real. They are in a base zone-floor area ratio of about 0.5 for commercial, and if it's mixed use, it's 1.35. Well, if you are in a certain zone, and you do certain things, and you provide certain community benefits, you can get up to 1.65 floor area ratio. And this is technical planning, I apologize for that, but it's just greater density, or greater commercial square footage, it's greater square footage for the parcel. And then if you are in a certain zone, you can actually go up to 1.85 or 2.25. And the community gets a additional community benefit from each of those steps as it goes up the development rung. And part of that is that the buildings are going to meet additional sustainability goals. Others are that they're going to get additional money towards open space, they're going to get a bike path built someplace, they're going to get some additional street improvements and safety crossings that are not just associated with that development. So you want to set up a series of parameters so that you achieve your community's goals, both from a development standpoint, and a regulatory standpoint, and a sustainability standpoint, and you have a series of steps. Because if you give all the development at the, as a base that's way up high, and this is what happens frequently, they say, well, let's upzone everything so we incentivize the development. And then later, they come back and say, okay, now we're going to do our community benefits package. Well, you've already given away the development, so there is no community benefit left, because you've already rezoned it. So how you, and so everybody wants to think about the entire plan, but one of the things you have to do is think about the fact that this is going to happen in a series of little small incremental pieces, and you have to set up, there are certain things that have to occur as buildings get built, so that you get the community benefits throughout the development process. And that's, whether it's, if sustainability is your goal, you can say, you know, if you're just building the lower-density development, maybe you just have to meet Title 24, which is, and, and you want it to be a green point-rated building to a certain level. If you want to get to the next level up in the step, you want to be a LEED building or a net zero building, and, and you're going to give them a little bit more development. And then if you want to go up to the next threshold, then you want to actually have an energy surplus, and that is going to be provided somehow back into the grid so that you can power all the city's electric vehicles. So there's a whole strategy that has to be developed so that everybody, it's good that everybody knows the rules, but you have to also set what your priorities are for your community benefits package. And if there is a term used more than any other today, it's community benefits, to make sure that the development gives you the community goals that you, you have.
In a nutshell, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so recognize we're seriously behind now. We still need to hear from Jessica and Rick some more on some of these topics. It is about 8:15, which we promised would be a break for pizza and salad. So, a proposal, which is, why don't we have, why don't we hear from Jessica, and then take a break, and then hear from the last two sections? Is that good with everyone?
And I'm going to start by saying, I'm very sorry that I'm not the Jessica Alba, I'm the transportation planner Jessica Alba.
This is good for us.
Yeah, it works, today it works. So, how I became involved in transportation planning is really looking at the concepts of accessibility versus mobility. And over the past several decades, we have really planned for mobility. We want to get as far, as fast as possible. And so we're creating wider and wider streets, infrastructure, more parking, and we're making it harder to get around by foot, transit, by biking, right? We're putting offices in one location, and school in another, and the residential in a third, and retail in a fourth. And there's a pedestrian in the middle of the street, in that red circle, and I would not want to be that little person there. If I am to go between one location on this arterial, I would definitely get in my car in order to cross the street or walk along, because it's not an environment where I would want to walk. And this has made it so that we are becoming more sedentary. We, over the past several, few decades, more sedentary in our lifestyle, we're getting harder time to get to healthy food, and to access food, and anything we need in our daily lives by walking or biking. So between 1980 to 2000, we're having much higher obesity rates across the country. We're now seeing a reversal back towards more walking and biking, and taking transit, both on our, in our junior or in our younger populations, but also in our older populations. People want to be where they can walk and bike and be in green environments, where they can access retail, the hospital, the pharmacy, without having to get into a car, for instance. So we know that zoning codes in the past have been part of the problem. We're separating the uses and making it harder to get between uses. And we're also requiring very, very high minimum parking requirements that force our developers to build a lot of parking, often too much parking, which makes it even more convenient to drive, and less convenient to get to a building by walking, biking, or taking transit. And the third thing, in addition to zoning, parking requirements, is the whole idea of traffic level of service. And as part of any plan, we're still looking at, using level of service analysis, where we're saying that a street can't operate as a highly congested street, we need to widen it, we need to add more lanes. So the F is the low grade, right? And A is the good grade. But an A for a traffic engineer is typically an F for an economist, because we, there's no activity on a street or a road that doesn't have any activity along it, where it's, you know, you speed through an environment. And this is supposed to be animated, but what we're trying to say here is that the more we build, the more people will drive, because it makes it easier for all of us to drive further and faster to our destinations. So, we are now at a point, just with net zero buildings and smart building technology and zero waste, and all of this, we're coming back to realizing that it's really about accessibility, and being able to walk and bike and take transit to our destinations as much as possible. Otherwise, we're just going to continue building more lanes on our highways and through our downtowns, we're going to build more parking, and it's going to be even harder to walk, bike, and take transit. But don't we need more parking? Well, parking is expensive, and that's something that we're not typically thinking about. Today, a parking space and a parking structure in a garage is anywhere from $30,000 to almost $100,000 per space in construction costs. So from an affordability perspective, that's really expensive. If someone wants to buy a house, or say, or condo, or rent an apartment, having a lot of parking in that building is going to make your apartment or your condo much more expensive. If we look at it from a cost, construction costs roughly $40,000, that comes out to a monthly cost of, say, between $350 and $500 per month that we're pushing into the parking structure every month. So if we're, if I can, instead of having two parking spaces for my unit, have one space, I can save $500 a month. If I have half the space for my unit, because I can share that space with someone else, I can save a lot of money. So these are things that we're starting to think about, and really try to incorporate into the types of housing, and, and commercial as well, retail, office parks, thinking about the costs, the high costs of parking. And what we can do in addition is to make our parking much smarter, by making sure that people know where to park, by having real-time guidance and information about where parking is available. We can price parking depending on what's the most attractive space, and we can share parking much more efficiently. So even in a residential apartment building, instead of me having, or I having two parking spaces, I could share those parking spaces with more people in the building, because there's always going to be some surplus, right? I don't always need my two parking spaces. Transportation demand management is something that's really supporting our entire transportation system. It's about providing more transportation options. It's about using the resources that we have and accommodate the development that we want to have, by shifting time of travel, shifting the mode of travel, and shifting the route of travel. So it's about, for instance, many of you have maybe heard of the Caltrain Go Pass, or car sharing, where we, a number of people share vehicles. All of this is becoming more and more common, because these are low-hanging fruit, that it's not very expensive compared to building more parking and maintaining an infrastructure that is incredibly expensive. And then we have our streets, and we've talked about green streets and, and green infrastructure in our streets, and trees and vegetation. We also have complete streets, and these are streets that were, not for every street, we can't fit everyone on every street, but we can plan and design our streets so that we can accommodate a more equal use of the street, when it comes to providing bicycle facilities, while also being able to get emergency vehicles through wider sidewalks, more supportive activity, restaurant use in the street environment, for instance, and having good street lighting and good crossing facilities. And then, of course, having good transit infrastructure as well, so that transit is really a part of our daily lives. We're not necessarily planning for the guy in Lycra on a bike. We have to think about the kids, and myself with my kids, for instance, or my grandma being able to bike, and feel safe when she bikes through a community. And we can get there. It's not, it's not impossible, and it's happening all over the peninsula and all over the Bay Area. And we do have hilly environments, but electric bikes are becoming more common and less costly, more affordable. So that's another way to deal with the topography that we have in the Bay Area, or here, especially on the peninsula. Let's see. No, it's not, there we go. And then we have emerging technology, where we're sharing vehicles in a much, to a much higher degree, whether it's carpooling, ride-sharing, we have bigger vehicles. higher degree, whether it's carpooling, ride-sharing, we have bigger vehicles that you can rent. There's also the transportation network companies, such as Lyft and Uber, and other companies that are coming onto the market, where we're, I personally don't necessarily have to own a car, because there are options for me. And then we're getting more and more into the completely electric vehicles, but also autonomous driverless vehicles, whether that's on a personal level, or on a public transportation level. And preferably, as much of this technology has to be shared, so that we're not, all of us having our own private vehicle that takes us between point A and point B, and then after that, is standing 90% of the day. And with this new technology, we can do much more with our infrastructure. We can build tighter parking facilities. We can reuse parking structures for other uses, if they're built in a proper way, whether that's making the height of each parking garage floor high enough, tall enough, for a future residential or office environment. Not having as much parking is really important in this sense, because if we build a parking structure today, we may not need it 10 years from now. So really thinking about, what do we do right now in order to make as efficient use of our infrastructure as possible, without spending money on, for instance, new massive parking structures that will be empty a number of years from now? And with that, I'm handing it back over to Andrea.
Let's do some questions, yeah. Thank you, Jessica. That was great. Questions about accessibility.
Well, I guess I'll ask a question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jessica. So, you know, one of the big issues for us as a community, in regards to the Baylands' development, is traffic and congestion. And so there's, you know, one of your slides talked about, you know, if I, you know, we have more density, we're gonna have more traffic. But we also have the possibility of creating a multimodal station at the site. And you also talked about some other technology, about autonomous vehicles, and having a fleet of those, and bicycles, you know, perhaps bicycle sharing program. So, you know, if you, if you implement those things, could you actually increase density, and actually reduce traffic and congestion?
Yes. I think, in an urban environment, even if it's not at all comparable, in San Francisco, in a downtown office building, maybe 5% to 10% of the employees get there by driving, because it's not convenient. In, in a community like the Baylands, or anywhere on the peninsula, we can see a big shift by having more people be able to take Caltrain to work, to and from work, and taking Caltrain up and down the peninsula for, you know, a visit in Burlingame, or whatever it is. Having Samtrans be an integral part of that, and where you have more frequent service eventually, whether it's a driverless transit at some point, and being able to get on your bike more frequently in order to get between destinations where you need to go. You can, we can see big shifts, probably reductions in 30% to 50%. The other thing is with congestion, in some locations, congestion is just part of the fabric, right? If you visit Burlingame Ave, for instance, or downtown Redwood City, you're gonna have a little bit, little bit of traffic, because people want to visit these destinations. If you are coming on and off a freeway, there's gonna be congestion, but it's part of the system, and it also encourages people to be able to walk, bike, and take transit to a much larger extent. So there are trade-offs, of course, but it's about providing more access to more destinations within a tighter fabric. And by doing so, we can reduce trips significantly, and parking demand for sure.
Well, you know, you talk about parking, and you mentioned these cities, Redwood City, Burlingame. We have a blank slate, so this isn't a destination right now. So some cities are reducing their parking requirements. You know, we've talked about perhaps having a very aggressive parking restrictions.
Yep.
You know, maybe, you know, parking that's allowed is, is shared parking.
Yep.
Right? More on a public scale.
Yeah.
Rather than personal. Do you, you know, have you seen other cities, you know, take a really aggressive approach to some of the parking that they're requiring in newer developments?
Yeah. Mountain View, in North Bay Shore, for instance, which is not a, an easily accessible location, parking is, or the requirements are drastically reduced, and instead we put in maximums, for instance. Many of the cities on the peninsula are, and around the bay, are doing the same, really thinking about the shared public parking, and making as much of the parking available to the public, rather than having specific, you know, the Wells Fargo having its own parking, the cafe having its own parking. Instead, by sharing as much of the parking as possible, you have multiple users in a 24-hour period using the same space. You park once, you walk between uses, you encourage people to walk along an attractive street instead. And that, in the Baylands, that will be critical, that you have the interaction, that you have the vibrant street environment, that encourages people to get out and walk, and enjoy the trees, and the little parks, parklets, and that kind of environment. But yes, really thinking about, what is the perfect balance between too little and too much parking? Where's the, where do you have the golden locks? Where do you hit that rule is critical.
All right, thanks.
It's my understanding that the modes of transportation aren't the issue, it's the frequency. And for them to be effective, it's my understanding that there would have to be stops every 10 minutes, by train and buses, to make it effective.
Yeah, absolutely. Frequency of transit is really critical. It can be supported by, for instance, having driverless, smaller vehicles take you the last mile, or the first mile. It could be, even if Samtrans may not be able to run service every 10 minutes, it could be other, having, or Caltrain than running every 10 minutes instead, so that you can access the station by walking and biking and taking transit, or taking a, some kind of driverless, or just something like Lyft to get to the station. So it's about having the, the integration of the systems, and making it as seamless as possible between all of the options that you have as well. But yes, frequency is really important.
But you also need some density.
Yeah.
To support the frequency.
Yeah.
So again, it's that, it's that balance, and that right sizing of all the systems that are coming together.
And with the implementation of Caltrain, we are gonna have a higher frequency of the trains.
Yeah.
And whether that's a few years out.
One of the things I think you have to think about, is you mentioned you have a blank slate, you don't have a Redwood City downtown right now. One of the things you have to think about, as this new part of your community evolves over time, is that if it's all one use, and not another use, and not a third use, and not a fourth, if you don't have all those different pieces of the equation, then, other than walking to the park and to the train, nobody has any place that they're going. The most difficult thing on the Google campus, or the Facebook campus, or the LinkedIn campus, or the, this campus, is that they all have internal cafes. Nobody, so there aren't exterior retail establishments that anybody else can go to. So getting those things turned inside out, so that they aren't internal buildings, but they're external, and they have mixed use and real retail, and so you have a destination to go to, and you can pick up all those convenience items that you need. And those can't just function with just businesses during the day, they need to have people there at night. So that's where the residential component comes in. So you need, as your community builds out, you want to have all of those components, because you don't get TDM, if it's all one use, very effectively, unless, you know, unless it's heavily managed by a major company, because all the little tiny pieces can't do it themselves. So what you need to do is think about how your community will grow over time, and change over time, so that you have all of those pieces together, and you allow for some, maybe a little higher parking ratios in the initial stage, but you expect those to be reduced over time, and you can kind of control that through your conditional uses, and as you're doing your overall phased master plan, that you get different pieces of the pie being built, so that you don't have it all be one thing. And I think that that has a lot to do with creating that walkability.
Yeah.
And the infrastructure.
Yeah, you know, that, that one slide that you showed, Jessica, where you had the parking structure that, you know, has a life for the near term, but a new life later on.
Yeah.
And that, that was, you know, that's brilliant, because, you're right, because you have the infrastructure that costs a lot of money, takes time, the transportation infrastructure. Eventually, once you increase the density, you'll get there to where you, it's feasible to build it, and then that's when you convert.
Yeah.
Now, that's, that's so smart.
And not knowing at this point how quickly driverless technology will be taking off. We, we just don't know how quickly it's gonna go. It's, it could be, yeah.
Sorry, I had two questions. One is that, I know we are not looking at, I know we're looking at regions or districts being energy neutral, not just individual buildings, but I think it's useful to know kind of what scale of building is, can be at net zero, because clearly if you build a bunch of buildings that are too big, and have to take in extra power from outside, and you keep doing that, and you keep doing that, then you can't possibly arrive at a net zero system. And what I was told is that the traditional wisdom was that you could kind of think of a two-to-three-story commercial retail building can probably support its use, its, its energy profile onsite. We had a consultant here from UPC, saying that that number was three to five stories. And I'm sort of wondering what your, and I'm not, like, I know you have to kind of give me a ballpark, because we haven't designed, specified a specific use, but I think it's still, for me, I would like to ask that question.
Yep.
Because it's an important thought tool.
Yep. No, actually, that's a really good question to ask. The, you know, as, as things improve, and design strategies, et cetera, et cetera, and all the technologies improve, the rule of thumb we kind of use is about a four-story building, however, we're definitely pushing the envelope on that, and there's even, the Bullet Center in Seattle is a six-story commercial office building. However, it has a huge hat of solar that extends over the, over its head, large brim. But really, what you're really trying to do is optimize, you know, the, the reduction in use, and the optimized ability to generate. So, yeah, a rule of thumb is, you know, currently four to six, I'd say.
Okay. So it has, it has improved, then?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 and it will continue to. I, I, there, there is a point at which, you know, you can't do much more that's actually cost-effective. But again, getting back to, this is what I find most interesting in this conversation, actually, is that here in our bubble of California, our grid is absolutely improving. It's, it's measurable. And so it's gonna be that interaction. At what point do you, you know, what can you do onsite, and then, and what do you do with the grid? And, and that, the decision point might actually change, at certain point, for certain buildings. Like, it may be more effective, more cost-effective to depend more on the grid than onsite.
I personally think we're gonna have to look at energy-positive buildings, as we start having to supply our, electrifying our transportation.
Yeah, no, that, that's a very big wedge, that, that buildings will possibly be able to supply.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then my other question is, I have this, like, this disconnect about this transportation thing, like, I'm all for mixed use, it's, it's great, it's a great principle. But according to the DEIR, 70% of people are still gonna drive, and you just said 30-
Thirty to 50.
50% are still gonna drive, which means that, how can you add, how can 30 to 50 to 70 to 80% still be driving, and yet you're reducing your, I don't understand that, because it says right in the DEIR, you're gonna add thousands of cars, car trips, to this area with the project, and yet people are trying to, I keep having people telling me, we'll end up with fewer cars on the road, and I just don't get that.
That's more from a, it's a good question. It's more from a regional perspective, when we're looking at vehicle miles traveled, traveled in the Bay Area, for instance. So we are, we are gonna grow, we're continuing to grow, unfortunately. And so if we continue building out in areas where it's green field, instead of infill, we're gonna continue increasing the vehicle miles traveled per capita. What we're doing here is putting the development in a place where it makes more sense, where more people will be able to walk, bike, and take transit for their typical trips. In commute, it may be a 30 to 50% reduction. In, for your trip to the store, it might be a more significant reduction, because you will have easier access to groceries, for instance. So it's, it's not for this development particularly, because you are gonna increase the number of trips here, but it's for the, the region as a whole, and from a global perspective, when it comes to greenhouse gases. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'd say you need to read an article by Helen Jarvis, but that's another story.
Okay. So I actually had a very similar question. So I'm curious, what's the name of that article by Helen Jarvis that you mentioned?
Uh, I would have to look it up, but it, I can't even find it.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I had almost the same question, you know, like, can you talk about, you know, the change in the metric from level of service to vehicle miles traveled? And, you know, how do we address the, the argument, you know, from, from the environmentalist, that, you know, if you, if you create this residential community, you're going to have more traffic, yet from a regional perspective, we've also heard that if we build just commercial, that we will actually increase carbon emissions, because people are gonna be having to travel from, further outside the area.
Oh, yeah.
Their jobs here.
And that's why we are in the situation where we are. We've, we've controlled the residential development, but really encouraged commercial development. So that's, that's one of the things that has created the, the imbalance between housing and, and commercial. And I think Rick will be talking more about this. The other thing that I wanted to say is different metrics. So in the past, we've focused highly on using vehicular level of service analysis. We haven't taken into account person level of service. Thinking about a bus where we have 40 people, is to compare that bus with one driver in one car, and giving them the same delay at a, at a, at a very, very specific intersection. Shouldn't we give the bus with the 40 people a little bit, some kind of wait, and also the pedestrians and the bicyclists waiting at the same intersection? So thinking about it from a person delay, rather than vehicular delay. Thinking about corridor travel time, for instance, rather than how long I have to wait at a specific intersection, is another one. Thinking about the, just from a qualitative perspective, how, how, how do I experience driving down this corridor today, compared to- this corridor today compared to 10 years ago, when it was, you know, 10 lanes and I couldn't cross by foot? Now I can, now I can, I may be spending a little bit more time in the corridor, but I am enjoying the experience more, because I feel safer, I see people walking on the street, I have retail on both sides, or active, a park on one side, whatever it is. Instead of just thinking about the throughput for vehicles, we now start thinking about the quality, and the environment, and the person on an individual level.
Okay. I'm now getting fairly concerned about time and your hunger level, so why don't we take a quick break and then come back for our two remaining presentations?